You can do the other day. You can do, well, you could, what you could do is you can have an International Space Society and just advertise it for a moment. But, yeah, in other countries, the big thing the US has is they have heavily, much lower rates for non-profit organizations with regards to mail. And all other countries do that.
I have a suggestion that my name, it'd be nice to be able to check my membership status online.
That's something that's going to be coming with the new NSS website and the database support that goes with it. And that's going to be here before the year is over. So you'll be receiving information about that.
Like I say, I was, I was very pleased to hear about the, in July, the headquarters is going to be doing the thing on the orbital space plane for Congress. I really think we need to get on, on top of that. They're, they're, just, you know, surfing around the web and chatting stuff. There isn't a lot of expectations of success for the orbital space plane. So one, we really needed to be a success. And on the other hand, if we're on top of it and it is a success, then we can claim some of the credit for keeping NASA on track and making it work.
Yes, well, Brian has been very proactive in setting up the meeting. Using his actions and working together, a good program. We've, we've had a lot of guys yesterday at the policy committee meeting discussing OSP at OASIA. So I think we'll make some progress there. Well, Brian, they want to comment. His question, he was saying, I mean, you're on top of the OSP question.
Yes. I'm so sorry, David. I didn't mean to cross him. Yeah, let me, it sounded like you walked in part of the informal part of the meeting. Just want to make it clear.
Why don't we start officially? Thank you all for waking up so early this morning after a long weekend. Welcome to the NSS Town Meeting. This institution, existence is 1989, gives the NSS membership a chance to meet, greet, interrogate, and hear from some of the NSS's senior leadership. Sort of like Question Time in British Parliament. We have here with us this morning, I'm Sir Tishu Hira, Senior Vice President of the Organization. On my right is Jim Plaxco, our Vice President of Chapters. My left is Mark Hopkins, Secretary. And our far left is Brian Shays, our new Executive Director. Before we start, I'd like to take note of the fact that we are meeting here on Memorial Day weekend. And I'd like to ask for a moment of silence as we think about the members who were in Colombia, the soldiers who died recently in the war in Iraq, who follow the news while you can hear all who are still dying over there, and all the men and women who have given their lives over so many years to make this holiday so significant to us. So if you can have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I think I'd like now to just turn this over first to Brian, who, tell you anything to support.
Oh, good morning. That was the plan. Good morning, and it is, it's great to see everybody here as we wrap up ISDC. This is my first one to attend, and I hope to see everybody in Oklahoma City in 2004. As many of you, hopefully, all of you are here in the opening ceremony on Friday. My interest in, for NSS is ensuring that we have a voice, and a very real voice, in the policymaking process in Washington and throughout the country, although that is focused in Washington DC. That we also find ways to, to enable members to participate in key projects. And Chapters have a lot of project going on already, and I want to make sure that we're able to publicize that and get that more visible to the membership and the public at large. And finally, find ways to connect members and chapters in new ways, particularly over the Internet. And in fact, I'll just start by talking about one of the things that we're doing in the, in the Internet arena. We'll have the ability this summer for members to, number one, maintain their own accounts online. So you can log on, change your address, change your email address, make sure all that data is up to date. Where I also have a feature called mynss.org, which is much like a Yahoo or site customizable homepage. It'll be a members-only feature. And it'll have all the various features of customizable news, you know, you can get your weather, your business information. Eventually, you'll be able to buy a mynss.org email address for yourself. And so there's a number of features that'll be in there. For Chapters, there will be an interactive calendar feature within this page, so that Count Chapters will be able to maintain a central location for their calendar of activities. And NSS can have a national activity base as well. And whenever you log into that site, it's going to tell you what's going on in your region. So you'll have a way to talk to members who are not members of your chapter that may not know that you're right down the road from them. Likewise, if you're a member and you don't know there's a chapter right down the road, this will give you a tool by which you can understand what's going on in your community. And so I think that'll be an important tool for recruiting and for keeping us connected. So there's a lot of features that'll be rolling out in this. You'll see more in AdAstruck and various mail and email communications from headquarters. So please be looking out for that. I suspect that we're just talking about the policy arena and the legislative affairs arena. This is obviously going to, going to remain a critical area of focus for NSS. We have a very unique strength in that we're the only space advocacy organization with an office in Washington DC. We have a full-time staff there in Washington. My background is from Capitol Hill and political campaigns. And so we have the opportunity to impact the policy process in Washington. We have conducted the first NSS Legislative Grassroots Conference, in which we ended up talking to about 90 congressional offices. In fact, we have members from NSS, ProSpace, Mars Society. We had a very diverse group of people that attended this conference and made those visits. And we're certainly hoping to expand that down the road. I expect that it's going to be an annual activity. We also have a team of volunteers that are based in Washington DC, or that general area, that are willing to maintain routine communication with Capitol Hill. So we'll have a communication plan with our, with key offices and committees that will be a sustaining level of contact. So it's not just one time a year we're going in town, visiting a few offices, or it's me getting up there as I can. We have a team that's going to continue to do that on a year-round basis and, and get our message out. Because it's important that in this, in this competition for ideas in Washington DC, and believe it or not, there are a few unique ideas in Washington DC, it's important that we have a presence. Other organizations, whether it's, whether it's other sectors of the space community, or in particular, other political movements, they have people in the offices once a week, once every couple of weeks. We probably can't get to that level just yet, but we have to strive for that regular communication. One of the exciting areas legislatively is, well, let me back up. I think we're, we're going to be taking an approach with our legislative initiatives and our policy initiatives, one that continues to focus on some of the challenges that NASA has. And Orbital Space Plane, Project Prometheus, the NASA Exploration Team, which is an all-encompassing effort to try to build a space architecture and look at a long-term plan. All those programs have promise, but all those programs also have the, the burden of past NASA failures and challenges behind that. They have, this is not, this is not an indictment of people at NASA, but, but the bureaucracy as a whole is, is just a tremendous number of challenges. And we have to find ways to help them execute those programs properly. So that will continue to be a focus of what's going on in the federal government and the executive branch. Other federal agencies are involved in, in space exploration, in space technology development. In particular, there's a growing relationship between NASA and the Department of Defense on common areas of launch vehicle needs and launching space access. So there's going to be a lot of that going on. However, the other, the flip side that we're going to be working on are some very entrepreneurial issues and some of the, some of the issues that, that affect space commerce, that have very little to do with federal funding. In particular, we're going to be, we have a major initiative, those approved by the Board yesterday, to focus on the suborbital launch market and the needs of that industry that is very, it's very much growing and very robust. There's a large number of very credible companies that are doing work in the suborbital launch sector. And their big challenge right now is not financial, it's not technical, although they do have those challenges that still have to be overcome. Their biggest burden right now is regulatory. And the federal government is not set up properly to understand what that market means, what that industry means, and then to apply some measure of regulation that maintains public safety. You know, they're, right now, those guys are trying to be pigeonholed into aircraft regulation or spacecraft regulation. Well, they're neither, they're somewhere in between. And it has a lot of implications for the industry as a whole. So we want to make sure that federal government barriers don't prevent them from being successful. Because if, as, as a nation, we can't allow somebody that takes the financial risk and the technical risk to make this happen, and it's a federal government regulation that prevents them from being successful, you know, we just need to fold our pretense and go home, if that's, if that's the attitude we're going to have in our country. So we think it's important to bring these barriers down, and a lot of the major focus in this area. Now, why are we focusing suborbital? Obviously, there's a near-term opportunity for people in this room to go to space, to go to the edge of space. That, that is a very real possibility. More importantly, the more I've looked at that industry from a variety of perspectives, I see that as a real foundation for the growth of opening the space frontier. This is, in a lot of ways, analogous to the PC versus mainframe battle just on the 1970s. These guys are under, under the radar strain in a lot of cases. They're not considered to be threats to, to primary orbital services companies, but they could very quickly grow to that, to that capability and beyond, and beyond LEO. So that's going to be an area of focus. We're going to continue to try to provide the best services we can at, at Headquarters for, for members and chapters, and certainly, I look forward to the questions today.
David Kewitt, DCL V Chapter, NSS. I want to tell you that all you all, but especially, you have a standing invitation to come by any of our club meetings and any of the taping's around space.
I'm going to be on, matter of fact, yeah.
But either if you just want to come by and sort of watch what's going on before that, or I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
And of course, thank you and your chapter members for stopping by Headquarters and helping out up there. A big help of yours.
Well, of course, the debate still goes back to the whole issue of following the shuttle policy with regards to NASA, and our policies toward NASA. And I think some people believe, in our group, that there's such a large drop-off in participation is because of the attitude of my previous Executive Director, no followers, of course, in relation to that relationship from NASA and NASA, and some actions taken that would have, that prevented our members from hearing their opinion about the whole Tito issue. I'm sure you're aware of what I'm talking about. And I think it needs to be, what needs to be done is we need to make a public statement of our position. After you've had your conference, and you've come up with a solid rationale, that we have to make it clear that our position is not necessarily the same as NASA, and we cannot, we can no longer quietly acquiesce to NASA's positions. Because if we do, we're going to lose still further credibility. I think a large number of activists were deeply offended by the actions two years ago, and have stopped participating in our organization. I can't prove that, but I, that's what I suspect. So we need to regain that credibility among the former members, and some of the members who are still members, but are frustrated by that, by those actions. And look forward to trying to, you know, get a common policy with some of the other space groups, and we give sort of a unified voice. We've been doing better, I think, cooperating, as you've been mentioning the last couple of evenings, cooperating with groups like the Mars Society, Space Frontier Foundation, and so forth. But we need to get, continue that work and come out with a kind of a public statement, you know, supporting like either private launcher development, launch service guarantees, or simply a more specific hardware direction, such as we've been discussing the last several days. So I think it's important that we do make some kind of a public statement within the next few months about this issue, especially since once the Columbia panel wraps up its investigation, matters are going to start proceeding towards some kind of a decision. Then if, that things have been held in the balance while that, you know, investigation continues, but once the investigation is concluded, you're going to see movement. And if we delay much longer than that, we won't have much of a voice in the matter.
Apart from rumors or something, or apart from the former Executive Director's personal position on expressing forcefully our views on Tito, Policy Committee took a very, very aggressive position in supporting Tito, in supporting space tourism in general. We issued a very strong paper with reasoned recommendations. And in fact, we were very, was very pleased when afterwards NASA came out with its space visitor rule. Now, I went through and defined two columns, looking for loopholes. Now, we practically could have written that ourselves. They gave us practically everything we had asked for in our previous policy paper. So we are, we were on record a long time ago, we're still on record in favor of that. The only thing I would say right now is post-Columbia, along the premises on which we are based, our tourism position are no longer in existence. And we may, and we may, in a sense, I probably have to go back and look at what governmental tourism options are still valid. Now, I've heard some interesting things coming out of the Soviet Union, which may or may not be true, like instead of saying two cosmonauts, after 2006, apparently they have the right to use exclusively their own use, or 2006 they may send one cosmonaut and two tourists, which would apparently would pay for the whole damn mission. Anyway, both of those things we will have to look at in the future. But that's, in terms of NSS's position being upfront, or counter, or not counter to the ASO, we've been pretty good on the, in the private area of wanting to do that. Brian, do you want to comment on a different area?
Yeah, the, the, obviously, I can't attest to previous, to previous positions, but I can say this, that I have, having been, having seen the NASA budget and the NASA, I think NASA from the inside and from out, from a variety of angles, we, we do have some opportunities to influence NASA, and we need to obviously take those opportunities. I think that there is, with the, it's ironic that as Columbia was occurring, the new NASA budget was being prepared to roll out. And in a lot of ways, it had the first glimmer of hope for a vision for the agency that, that hasn't been seen in a long time. It's by no means a complete, complete picture, but there were some indications that it was starting to move in the, in the right direction. For example, with Project Prometheus. Another initiative that was included in the NASA budget this year was a token level of funding of about $40 million for human research initiative. And that is specifically designed to look at what you do, or what the impact of long-duration space travel is on the human body. Well, you would probably say, well, gee, they've surely even been doing that for a while. They haven't been. They'd stopped doing that for eight years. There had been a moratorium under the previous administration, you can't look at anything, spend any money looking at beyond low Earth orbit. So in a lot of ways, NASA was hamstrung and was told, had a gag order, you can't talk like this. And so they have, there's been a major shift in thinking that at least they can start planning for the future and start looking at what happens beyond LEO. We, there was a discussion about orbital space plane earlier. This is, 10 years ago, I wouldn't have said that an orbital space plane was the, was the right way to go. I think, you know, we should have focused all of our energy on, on developing next-generation systems, and then having a, a nice gradual transition between the shuttle and that next-generation system. We no longer have that luxury. We're in a position of having, we, we need backup access to, to low Earth orbit, and we need it now. And we need it very, very soon. So we believe as an organization, as, as a board, that OSP is a critical part of that, critical part of that picture. Doesn't mean that NASA's not going to have trouble doing it, that we don't still fear some of the cost overruns and the management problems that go along with NASA programs. And that's why it's going to be important for us to make, make sure that OSP is a very focused and fairly simple program, uses today's technology, doesn't try to go too far beyond technology that we can roll out right now off the shelf and apply to that vehicle. The reason for that is if you have overruns and have problems with that program, number one, it'd probably eat into your money for a future system, and the delays will eat into the time you can use to spend developing a future system, and you'll lose political credibility and public support as you do that. So it's going to be important for us to keep them on task. But the bottom line is, we do need that kind of capability that we're, that's represented by an orbital space plane, the assured crew access. And then that system can actually be built into future systems. Because you're going to have to have a crew return module and a crew return capability on anything that we do down the road, whether it's a new space station, going to Mars, going to the moon, you have to have the capability to get those folks back into Earth's atmosphere. And there's very few ways to do that short of, of a vehicle like the shuttle or a small orbital space plane, whether it's a capsule, winged vehicle, lifting body, whatever it may be. All that being said, I think it's important for us to focus on, on NASA. The attractive thing about the suborbital industry is that that is largely separate from, in fact, it's almost wholly separate from NASA, any of the other space activities going on. The primary area that we have to focus on there is the regulatory body, and right now, it's the Federal Aviation Administration. So it's a very, very separate entity, and that's, that's one of the benefits here, is that we can help, we can help try to shape NASA's future, but we don't necessarily have to, to tackle a lot of problems with NASA in order to achieve our objectives on, on the suborbital issue. And I think suborbital has the chance to really, long-term, grow into an industry that can eclipse even what the government's doing. So I think we have some real exciting opportunities long-term. But absolutely, I, we will be, we will be publicly stating our position in the suborbital arena. The plan is to pull the major companies together, find out what we can work, work on as a, as a coalition, and absolutely, we'll be making this a major, a major public focus of our activities.
Great. Just in general, one of the criticisms over the year has been NSS is a toady of NASA, or NSS is always opposing NASA, or NSS is a toady of industry, NSS is always opposing industry, therefore, they hate us. We walk a fine line. We, we have allies in both quarters. We have common goals and interests in both quarters. And our interests from time to time converge and diverge, and we try to, we try to express those. Sometimes you don't see us working behind the scenes, because there's no point in making a public spat, because that just puts them in a position where they have to say no. So sometimes we work behind the scenes to get them off where they are, whereas if we made a public fuss, they dig their heels in. And it's just a kind of a balancing test, which is, we probably have Brian now, among other things. Jim, do you have a question?
Well, it's actually for Brian. Brian, we're relatively new to the organization, and we have a unique and valuable perspective, I think, on, or plateau, to assess what you see. And I, not knowing any of the details myself, I think that perspective is, again, invaluable. What is your wish list? When you look at the organization, what, what, how does the structure serve or not serve you as the Executive Director and the NSS membership at large?
Well, the, the first thing that, that any, any, any self-servant organization in Washington wants is more staff, because there's always a, it's always a stress level, you know, anybody that does anything, you can always have, you know, one or two people. So, you know, that's always a, always an area of interest. But in terms of the wish list, you know, one of the things that we want to, the, the area that I see is absolutely critical for NSS to remain a voice, to grow that voice within the policy community, and to, and to really be, really to be recognized as not just a leader, because really, we are now, but the, the foreign-away leader in this, in this area is credibility in the policymaking community. And whether or not we agree, Jeff's right, you know, occasionally we, we agree with NASA, occasionally we don't. Occasionally, we agree with industry, occasionally we don't. And industry's a little bit subjective, because you have a large array of companies. But it's important to have allies and to have open communication. You know, one of the, one of the things that, that NASA asks of us, and I've got very good relationships with, with, with a lot of senior folks over there, all they ask when we oppose them is that we simply let them know what we're going to be doing. They simply want to have an open line of communication, so they understand our position, and they have the, the, that perspective that we offer them. So having the relationships and the credibility is, is very important, and I think that we are accomplishing that. I was asked to testify about two months ago before a Senate Subcommittee, and that was a direct result of a lot of the efforts we've had on the Hill, we had on the Hill prior to that, trying to raise some of the visibility for, for NSS.
Hey, Brian, I'm sorry, it's just, my, my question really refers more to the internal workings of NSS, and the internal structure that allows you as a Executive Director to function and see your goals, or the goals of the Board of the NSS in general, to progress.
My answer is a long way of getting to one of the points, which was, which was the, the policymaking structure within NSS that helps us achieve that, achieve that objective. Part of that is the advocacy side, which is the, the ability to activate our members to do things that we need in the advocacy arena. Those of you that have been longtime NSS members know there was one phone tree, and there's an interest in trying to regenerate a phone tree system, but with a modern twist. Rather than on the phone tree, you have to explain every single level of detail about a piece of legislation, here are your points, here's what you have to write it to. The phone tree's much simpler, you all can say, hey, you've got a message in your mailbox, could you please make sure you open it, here's who it's from, here's what it's about, and it spurs people to action with a personal call. And you can also accomplish a lot more calls, because you don't have to explain all that level of detail. You can probably make five times the number of calls you normally could in that process. So that's a tool that we can use to, to help us, to help us do that job. The other angle is, is what I actually mentioned earlier, and we're trying to, trying to move towards a path of, of correcting it, which is the, our electronic connectivity. We have a lot of, we have a lot of challenges in terms of how we maintain member information, chapter information. I understand it's been an ongoing challenge to make sure that, that information remains current, because there's so many sources of data out there, and so many places that data is posted, you know, how does this, all this stuff stay current? So we're trying to centralize that, so that we have a single place, put in data one time, and that's all you need, because it goes everywhere it needs to go. So we're, that'll be an evolving situation, but we're trying to put some tools in place that a lot of that can happen. So that was one of the things I wanted early on, that enabled us to do, to do that kind of, that kind of connectivity. Aside from that, those are probably the, two of the bigger items that, that are on the wish list, and I think are also in progress, so hopefully we'll have those, those wishes filled.
I would add two other items. 100,000 new members, mostly young, and a couple hundred thousand, and a couple hundred thousand dollar donations.
100,000 members, that gives lots of money.
Yeah, that's right.
And that actually, you know, is a problem, which has been much discussed here in, in our chapters too, is attracting younger people. Now, the, the generation that's up here with the rise of Brian, basically grew up before spaceships. And spaceships were something that you, were really the best you could dream about. The younger generation's kind of grown up with spaceships. It's all been there, done that to them. And there's no, there's not as much of, I call it, dream component. And there's much more of a generation that's used to, I guess, bang, 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 matrix type stuff, rather than the patience of stalagmites and stalactites, you know, drip, 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 which is the way it is to get things done in the real world. And there's a disconnect in our ability to enlist people like that. Now, we've watched other organizations, I mean, for example, the Mars Society generated a lot of excitement. Some of their projects had more visibility, because they're on Earth, ours are more in the get things done big and along in the future, although it's not working that way. But they've also peaked, and then some of that initial interest tends to fade it, because it's hard to sustain in young people. We are really looking for ways that we can attract people, enlist them. And more than that, we want to empower those who do have dreams to, to work, to bring their dreams to fruition. If someone came to the, to our Executive Committee and said, you know, I'd really like to do this, can you provide a structure, can you provide guidance, can you help me? That's what we would like to do, so we can say, bless you, my child, go, just keep, keep us informed, what can we do to make, to make that happen? Is that a fair way of stating your aim, Jim?
Yeah. Jim, is there any plans to, to have an association with Loretta Cidalgo of the world? These are, Loretta Cidalgo is a good example of a person that is inspiring the youth and the future of bears. And she, I sat in that, in that seminar and watched, I've never since seen smiles on adults' faces.
Now, I was very sorry to listen, because I spent about three hours talking with her the day before. So if you made an association like that with somebody, their, their ability and their current network capability is just to contribute.
The letter is on Brian's to-do list after this.
Oh.
Not true. That's, that's, that's my wedding ring.
Jim? No, my, my response doesn't work either. No, my response doesn't work either.
There is, we do want to build coalitions. We talked about that with other space advocacy organizations, and certainly, the Space Generations Organization is one of the ones that we'll try to reach out to. I think anywhere we can find common ground, even if it's for a short period of time on a specific issue, we want to try to do that. In her case, it's really more of a cultural change, and a cultural shift is where she's trying to go. But obviously, we want to try to reach out. You know, if every space advocacy organization were to be, or have some solidarity on a particular topic, and every member of industry, big and small, degree, academia, researchers, we are still a fairly small part of the political movement in the United States. So we cannot afford to be split and to have divisions when we have so many of the things that are nipping around us that are not related to our issue at all. They're the ones occupying the time and taking, making the priorities in this country, whether it's in the culture, in the policymaking process, wherever it may be. So we have to find ways to unite, there's no doubt about it.
Question? Yes?
Wendy International. Peter Baker, from Castro Valley, the Mary. When the International Space Station is completed, we will be able to fulfill the original NASA plan to go to Mars. We can certainly use it as a space service station to complete that armless thing out there and have a base on the moon, probably around the time the Chinese have a base. And we can use an approved version of the Mars plan to land somebody on Mercury. So I'd like to know, what is NSS trying?
What's on Mercury?
So you can use an approved version of the Mars plan to go to Mercury, you know, with technological improvements, you know, because whilst you can't go to Venus because the star has had its, got a grab, so you can watch it go to Mercury. But why, what is NSS trying to do to see to it that the International Space Station is completed correctly and on time?
Oh, Spas is, is, they've talked about, kind of, a long discussion about. More generally, the key issue, I think, in space station analysis is space transportation. And the fund, as you pointed out earlier, is putting together a task force in July to look at that entire question. So we're deeply involved in that.
Actually, the first item on our action policy agenda the past year has been completion and full utilization of space station. It's interesting, as I understand it, and Brian can correct me if I'm wrong, is what they seem to have done is they periodically redefine completion. So it's a little bit less, because my late term, I look at is the, what they call, I think, core complete, I call the first phase, and like, there's a big habitat, which is three-quarters complete, sitting in Huntsville in a warehouse, and I'd like to find some way of getting it up there. But I understand the process in Washington, is let them get their core complete before you tell them you're going to want the rest of it, unless you overburden them with, well, you want the moon right now, we only want to give you a small space station. How does that?
No, that is true. The definition of what is complete has been shifting, obviously the functionality of space station has been changed and reduced over time. You know, it just never occurred to anybody that, when they first find the space station, that, because it was envisioned as this massive multipurpose facility, well, it turns out that satellite servicing and a waystation to other planets isn't compatible with microgravity research. You can't do both in the same facility, because of the perturbations in the station and the environment. So there's a whole host of things that weren't looked at very well. But the first thing, the absolute first thing you need to finish the space station is to get the shuttle flying, you know. That's the first thing you have to have happen. And what we need to do is make sure that the shuttle is able to fly again safely, but that it flies for the duration that's required to support the space station, but then we make sure that the investment is moved as quickly as possible into next-generation systems. Whether or not, I know that there's a debate even today about whether or not we should continue supporting the space station, just, you know, send the money elsewhere. The bottom line is, that is our beachhead in space. And as problematic as it is, and as many challenges as it has, and as many things as we may like to change about it, and hindsight's 20/20 in a lot of areas, that is our presence in space, and if that goes away, I can't tell you how difficult it will be to get up again. So we have to have a destination, we have to keep flying, we have to maintain a reason for doing it, even if it's a very ugly process that we don't like, that gets us there, we have to keep doing it in order for us to continue to move forward. So it's part of the political reality that we have to face as we try to make some of these changes. But yeah, completing the space station is a critical.
Jim, a quick question.
What is our current membership number right now?
Sixteen, sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand.
Yeah.
Usually, you like to see about a hundred thousand.
Good luck.
Okay. You constantly, you constantly see advertisements and papers, you know, buy one, get one free type deals. Where is it to say that we can't make it a expected responsibility of a member of NSS, that when they become a member, that there should be an agreement, that they have, within one year's time of their membership, the expected responsibility of bringing in at least two, preferably three, new members? You bring in a regular member at the regular rate of thirty, thirty-five dollars?
Thirty-eight, Jim.
Thirty-eight.
I've been underbilling you.
No, I've given my, more than my share.
Yes, we have. Yes, we appreciate it.
Bring in a student member, bring in a senior member, this way we get a little bit more of a diversity in the organization. If they fulfill those objectives of bringing in three, then I think maybe for their next year's renewal, there could be a discount in their membership rate, or they get a free membership for the succeeding year, with the emphasis being that three new members now have the same responsibility of bringing in three new members.
Well, I'll tell you, I certainly, with my members who came in with that kind of commitment, actually, Mary Avon had some idea like that. One thing I do know, from my experience, and from just watching all the direct mail stuff, is a huge chunk of our members come in, not really sure what they're buying, what they're getting into, and they come in curious. It would be, it's almost like Catch-22, to say, people come in to find out what it's about, to say, "If you come in, we're going to expect you to do all these things." That would be kind of the thing that might deter them. On the other hand, what Larry's proposal, which has been floating around for a long time, was maybe offer to individual members the same kind of rebates for new members that we offer to chapters. There are a lot of members who aren't part of chapters. And that's something that the chapters committee might explore, or the executive committee. And I know Brian was thinking about all sorts of new ways to do this, and there's a little things, and I turn it over to you here, Ken.
There's, other organizations have what they call a member-get-a-member program. It's not, those aren't necessarily geared to, it's a responsibility of every member to do it, but it provides the opportunity, if someone wants to sign up for the program, and they get five members, then they get a free membership the next year, or something like that, recognition and ad astra, you know, that they're participants in that program. And that is one thing we're looking at, is implementing something like that, that will provide an incentive for people to join. And obviously, the other element is, as an organization, we have to get at the message of what we're doing, and provide reasons for people to want to join, and then provide opportunities in different venues to do that. So we're trying to find opportunities where we can do, whether it's participating in events, doing targeted mail that is in areas that we've never talked to before, where we think there might be some receptivity to membership. We're doing a lot of those things, trying to find ways to bring in new folks.
You know, speaking of new members and what they expect, I have a, one of our big problems and major concerns all the time is renewals. Members come in, and hopefully, they'll find what they expected and more, but obviously, the fact that some people don't renew, they don't find it. NSS Online Report was created as another way of creating a tie to members and the organization, so that hopefully, when a renewal letter came, there's another contact that reminds them that this is something they've been part of for a whole year. I am curious what you people in the audience think about NSS Online Report, whether it's been effective, whether it's been disappointing, things you liked about it, things you did not like about it, or things you'd like to see in it. Does anybody like to leave some feedback? Jim?
I appreciate getting it directly sent to me, where I can just, when it comes in on the email, but at the same time, I like to see it posted on the web, on the NSS website. So it's readily available for anybody who doesn't normally get it from the outside, who's just lurking around and wanting to learn about it, and says that they see that, and that there's actually an archive.
That's a good idea. And if you join NSS, you can get sent to you monthly directly when I come in. What do you think about the content that's in it, and what's not in it, or the link, for example?
Depends on my mood and the time of...
The time of month?
Well, you know, I mean, I constantly get, I can't begin to tell you how many emails I get, but I do try to set aside the time to read, because I think it's always important to be in touch with what is going on back in headquarters, because I can't get on the phone and call back there, and I can't necessarily send an email to you, because you'll sometimes say, "Please don't bother me, you're giving me too much stuff here for me to..."
Well, they're only fourteen, two-day period that time, Jim.
Well, just like you, every time that, you know, every time I give you something, you say, "Go out there and recruit." Yeah.
Okay. Well, I need a comment here, my contact, the link.
May I address one of Jim's things?
Yes.
Jim, the question of posting NSS Online Report on the web, I can give you some of the background. I offered to...
Who's from Ketchikan, you know, or what's around?
Yes, from Boston, and I've been active in chapter support in NSS. I offered to forward NSS report to the chapter reader email list, about a hundred and twenty people, but I couldn't guarantee that everybody on that list was a paid member, and I was pretty sure some of them weren't. And so I asked for a decision from one of the officers, and the decision was that this is a member benefit and should not be publicly accessible. Now, I would recommend that you revisit that question.
There's a long way, some organizations post it, you know, you get the previous month's piece, and, you know, so it's not, you're not getting the latest, greatest data, you're getting an example of what's there, and you can get a sense of it. So I think we can pretty easily post the archive there, that's a month old.
There's also a big difference in member benefit that comes to your mailbox without hassle every month, and, oh, do I want to go look at NSS, or to see what's going on these days, and work my way through the website? So the two are not, I don't think, consistent. But more comments about the link, the content, it's supposedly about two parts, some things about space or space development that you might not hear about, or things that we discovered about the great things in the universe, and the great pictures and things you can go learn more about.
Well, as far as the content there, I mean, I sometimes incorporate it into my little email list that I send out to educators called Astro News, which is news for educators and students.
Which is pretty cool, by the way.
Astro Notes, I'm sorry, Astro Notes, news, opinions, and topics for educators and students' notes. So I incorporate from the NSS Online in there, just to, you know, let others know what's going on.
Do you have any?
Yeah, I got onto the website, I looked at that whole map to space thing, and on the picture thing, the picture is too big to fit into the screen, so you would like, go up to the picture and then try to list, you know, the advantages, the disadvantages of doing, like, having a space project on, but as soon as you take off the picture, try to move the picture, to move the screen, so you can get, so that people can go away. So basically, it was just totally defective, it was the best, shrink that whole map thing down to some of the screen, that would really help a lot of people, because that helps you to get both your left tendons and your right tendons going, because you can look it up and get, like, just, they would, like, list the text.
Do you know what version browser you were using, and what browser?
Windows browser, probably the latest today. I got it, like, last year.
Netscape Internet Explorer, that would be useful for them to know, what it doesn't work in.
It was a Windows 98 SE.
The browser, but you can get the latest.
It's probably the latest browser from, it's more important having your screen.
Yeah, the screen resolution.
I tried to print that, I think it worked.
Yeah, it's right there.
Is the email, is it only text-based, or is that, has that been the case, or is there an option to receive a graphical HTML-based email?
The problem with that is you don't have universal coverage of email software that will accept HTML-based email. So rather than, you know, run the risk of cutting some people out of the loop, we go with the lowest common denominator to ensure that everybody sees the exact.
So it's, yes, links.
That being said, we do want to find a way to provide that feature, because there's a lot of very attractive things you can do with an HTML-coded email. But we also don't want to, because there are people who like the systems that won't enable it to be read, to be read, and so maybe there's a way for us to, people can get a preference when they subscribe, say, "Do you want text-based or HTML-based?" So we can look at that and see if there's a way to provide it, because that's something I'd like to be able to do for folks as well. Because that's what I like getting as well, but other people prefer the text. So we want to make sure that we have options for both.
Great.
I like, I guess, while you're talking about this, something that I've noticed is that you keep changing the address you're sending it from. So I use filters extensively to handle the email that comes in, and every third time you change the address, I break my filters, and I find that annoying. So pick a name and use it consistently.
I'll figure, we use a commercial service to send the mail out, so I'll figure out what the deal is. So, figure it out.
When we first started, it was, the subject line was NOR, and I deleted them all. I had no idea this had anything at all to do with what it said. And I believe you've changed that. When I have time to read them, they're worth reading. It is something that I, if I'm in a hurry at the moment that I'm looking at my email, I tend to put it aside to read later.
Do you think it's too long?
No, no, it's good, it's just that I'm having a problem with my email time management.
Yeah. I don't like the most of my time being used to spare before this.
By the time I've done that, I have to be somewhere else.
I've heard the comment a couple times about length of the emails, I haven't actually gotten it myself, so I'm not an expert here, but a really common solution to that is have a teaser paragraph, about three or four sentences of what the topic is, a link to your website so you have the full content available, so people can pick and choose the elements that are most relevant to them.
That's essentially the way it works. Maybe a teaser paragraph, two paragraphs of topic with a link for further information. And the question I sort of getting at, which is, two. One, are there too few or too many things that each sending, and also, is the mix of stuff about the organization and stuff outside the organization a satisfactory mix for people? That's the kind of comments I would like to...
Just kind of click, because, because I love the way to set it up now, is that, yeah, you love email addresses, it's not something that you just click and go.
Actually, that is an interesting way in which you can open up NOR to non-NSS members.
You send abbreviated content through the mail with a link to members-only section on the website, so that you can open it up, but at the same time, maintain a members-only benefit component to it.
I will say this, from my point of view, I don't want to read it, I don't want to have to go somewhere else, it's an extra step, two bottles of beer. Mary Ann?
I don't want to see us reproduce the content that's going out daily on space.com and spacedaily.com, since a lot of us probably subscribe to those newsletters, or may want to. They have all that news, and I get it fresh, and then I get, and it says two weeks later, it's all news, and I think it makes us look bad if we have too much of that. I'd rather see more of the NSS content.
Well, one of the things that we did come out, we did come out of the Chapters Committee meeting, is we are going to be adding a regular monthly Chapters section to that, highlighting current chapter activities, things along those lines, to really make it more relevant to NSS members.
Back there?
Yeah, I guess I might add a vote of confidence, but it's kind of a personal vote of confidence on the newsletter. My mode of operation is, is I refuse to be anchored to the computer. I have too many other things in life to do, so I take your newsletter, I shrink it down in Word, make it a double-column, two-sided, one-page printout, and I take it with me and read it as I'm on the fly. read it as I'm on the fly. Okay? So I consider myself to be fairly computer literate, but I will not waste all of my personal private time in front of a computer. And so I find your newsletter to be very beneficial, and I am physically on the fly doing a lot of other things outside.
All right, who's going to leave this side?
Okay, to answer that, what you're asking for is a printable version, but you also don't want to...
I can get to the printable version very easily on my own.
Sure, okay.
No problem.
But to answer Jeff's question, in my personal opinion, and I've seen other similar newsletters, it's four times too long and should come out four times more often. So just same content and send it out weekly. And there are ways you can do that for your cost.
There's a cost factor, that's why.
Talk to me offline about cost.
Can we go to a different topic?
Yeah. Okay, to go very briefly back on Space Station topic, I brought this up in one of the other sessions, that the one that Space Station can do for the manned planetary settlement program is prove whether vertebrates mammals can successfully produce embryos, grow young to adulthood successfully in a one-third and a one-six G environment. But the only other way is to take the animals and have a whole base on the moon of Mars, of personnel to support the animal test facility, which is pretty expensive for their boot. So we do need to get this information as soon as possible, so it would be very helpful if at some point the NSS could make a, again, a public statement of support for completion and inclusion of the centrifuge module for the Space Station and get that out there and operational as soon as possible.
I think that some of that may be in our Space Station policies. I know the manner of policy, we all very strongly agree with what you said.
Okay.
Yes.
I'd like to get back to the membership question. I've known about NSS for a really long time.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I've known about NSS for a really long time, but I've never actually become a member because it's never been very clear to me why, why I should. The rest of it is, you say you have about 16,000 members, what's your membership growth on a monthly basis, and what are your demographics of it? Have you done any market studies of your direct membership?
Well, I can answer some of that. What NSS does is a number of things. As an organization, what we do is we take the membership contributions, both of cash and services, and we channel those in a way which leverages our effort and actually tries to make the future actually happen. We take your money and we try to put it forward. That's extremely important. That's the number one function of any large membership organization. The second thing we do for you individually, which may not be as important out in California, but in large parts of the country is, is it reminds you that you're not alone out there and that space is important. We provide a support structure in terms of information about space, and unlike in Houston II, most of our members really probably do not get space.com, spacedaily, they only get glimmers of space information in their local newspapers. And what they get from us through AdAstra and through other sources and just from the renewal bonuses, it's just a reminder that we're not alone and these things are important and that they're right.
I'm sorry, maybe I didn't get that right. What I was looking for was the differences between, as a consumer, and I'm not talking about my project, I know exactly what I said because of the project, but as a consumer, not just for me, but how do people pick, if they're only getting to one, do they pick Mars or Mars Society, Planetary Society, or, you know, of the 70 different advocacy groups, which one do they choose?
Okay, so very simple, if you ask in one sentence, what does NASA stands for? We stand for a space program that goes somewhere. We think a bunch of tin cans circling Earth orbit is not a space program, is not what humans are for. You have a space agency to send people, everything else is precursor and ancillary to doing that. That's what NSA stands for. NSA is basically focused beyond Earth orbit. Our belief is that eventually, things within Earth orbit can be handled commercially, and our job there is merely to get the structures so that commercial interest can actually develop it. It takes a lot of help to get beyond Earth orbit. We are not destination-driven at this point, and we have not said, "Go to the moon first, we go to Mars first." There are two reasons for that, historically. Number one, we're really not sure, there are good arguments both ways. And number two, we've always been an opportunist organization, we'll follow where the main chance is to get public support. In 1996, we had a two-day conference in Chicago right after the Mars rock discussion about life on Mars, and there's a lot of interest in Mars, and what we did as a major focus, we were trying to urge a Phase A study of a Mars program, because there was interest. So that was a discreet, relatively low budget, but would have made a major step in at least telling us what would be involved in moving to Mars. We, for example, you've heard of 1% for the Future. That was an idea that I think Bob Zuprin sort of tossed off casually when he came to a meeting in Chicago, which we actually picked up and pushed in our organization before Mars Society picked it up again. Our 1% for the Future was for human space settlement generally, then Bob diverged and said 1% for Mars, but that's their focus, their organization, it's fine. We look at it, I think, as we're sort of like, going to space is like a why. All the stuff that you need, propulsion, life support, spacesuits, are all in the stem, and you don't have to decide quite which way you go yet because we're not there and we don't need that controversy. And I think that's what would distinguish NSS. And we are also in the realm, we will support efforts where we can't even approach space over power, we will encourage people to look into tethers, we'll look at all that kind of stuff. If you have something that you could do, we will try to help you find a way of pushing space activity in that direction. Any other?
Yeah, I've got one. NSS has historically been sort of a dominant organization in the space movement, all the other groups are basically offshoots of NSS, somebody doesn't like what we're doing. Or has a, or has a vision which is very focused on one sort of thing, or one particular individual, one, two, or one particular individual's views. If you want to be in the core, what...
What kind of feedback have you got on this document? And then I just wanted to give my comments, my first impressions, that it seemed to be trying to attempt to be all things to all people. My first impressions were that someone was trying to not make anybody on the board mad. And so I guess my point is, not halfway through, I kind of got lost. So I understand the one-liners up at the top, which really helps refocus me, but it's related to the previous speaker and membership and what NSA stands for. What kind of feedback have you got for the... Ronnie, can I ask, who did take that question? Ronnie McJoy is one of the architects of our roadmap back to the things like that. He's also a member of our board.
Well, if you'll notice, my email address is not on that document, so I don't get direct response on it. I have, good and bad, I haven't heard anything, any negative comments, any strong negative comments or any strong positive comments. It's a document, it's really three documents, the Statement of Philosophy, that's where we stand, I have yet to encounter an NSS member who says, "I don't agree with this." I mean, we did our best shot to try to essentially do demographics of ourselves in a major policy summit that took all day, to find out who we are and where we want to go, why we're doing what we're doing. We're still wordsmithing the words, the only words that really take a major board effort to change are the mission statement, the mission statement, the other ones are negotiable and we just updated those again, and within a week, we'll get version three of those out. The major items are major lies, again, no one has yet come to me or anyone else I know of and say, "Well, no, we're not about supply or war," or "We don't believe in ethics." "We want slavery out of the world." So far, no one has objected to any of those, especially specifically in the Statement of Philosophy, no one has objected to any of those points.
I would say as well, that as a roadmap, it provides a vision for the organization. What we talked about before was we talked about several early launch systems, orbital space plane, those are all things, those are all parts of the foundation and the structure by which we build to those levels. So the things we do from a policy perspective that have a day-to-day focus are things that we believe we build towards that roadmap. And so the roadmap document is intended as that guiding light. Those individual priorities are not going to be short-term priorities, those are long-term priorities. And so that's simply envisioned as a framework by which we can understand how we conduct our business everywhere else. And so, you know, connecting the suborbital launch sector to the roadmap is our objective, and that's what we try to do in our policy priorities.
I saw a question back there. Yes.
Hi, it's Veronica Zabala from Arizona. I was wondering, like, getting back to St. John's question about the status, you know, the stat, you know, men, women, you know, geographic increase in membership, is there a way that we can put that within AdAstra or online, same as with, because I'm really interested, I try to promote women in engineering and things along this nature. Information like that would be helpful for increasing recruitment of active members, because we have members, but then there's a difference between members and active members. And same as with the polls that we do, you know, the stuff that we fill out and send into HQ, is there a way that we can get those results as well, whether online or within AdAstra?
The survey results will be published in AdAstra, and then eventually, I want to get to the point that we can have an online survey system as well. But to answer the question on the diversity issue, there actually was an AdAstra issue focused on the diversity issue in sometime last fall, I believe. And if you want some extra copies of that, you know, talk to us and we can, we can make those available to you.
If we could do that probably on a semi-regular basis, so that when we can see, you know, what we're doing wrong, or if we're doing something right or wrong at a particular timeframe, or if it's correlated to a certain event, you know, like 9/11, we had a lot of members, you know, just couldn't be active, they lost jobs, things along this age, and this will help other members see, well, this is why this chapter is not active, or what is this chapter doing that even after 9/11? They're so focused and whatnot, what are they doing right that this, you know, what I can do for my chapter? So statistics like that can help.
Jim?
Membership brochures. What's the latest word on whether there's going to be a new batch of them? I noticed that during the entire conference here, the only membership brochures I saw were the ones that were put out by Larry Evans for OCSS. You know, this would have been a good opportunity for somebody walking in off the street that if they wanted to, you know, join up, they are not currently a member. I didn't see any NSS brochures available for folks that might be attending this that aren't members actually.
I think there were some brochures available, but I have to admit, we don't necessarily, you know, since most of the ISTC attendees are NSS members, it's not as much of a recruiting opportunity. The bigger opportunity is prior to ISTC, and you have opportunities to recruit in the community and bring people into ISTC.
Or have the brochures available for members to take back home with them?
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I think we should certainly incorporate that and make sure that it's available.
I also point...
I'm sorry. We are looking at updating the brochure, there's a cost factor involved, so, because those are used all across the country, but we obviously want to get them updated because the data in there has the old rates. That being said, we respect the old rates, so if you recruit somebody with that brochure and they send in that rate as a new member, we will respect that brochure.
I can also point out, well, the brochure was designed, it was designed for people out, away from immediate access to headquarters, that it could be photocopied, as eight and a half of eleven piece of paper. So you can always fall back on that if you've got something hot to try, it's kind of worth the coffee cost to do that.
Well, there's also membership...
The black ones.
Right, but I mean...
The black ones.
Yeah, who should I have?
Yeah, I actually have several comments that have been building up. Earlier, you alluded to visibility of NSS, attracting younger members, just attracting members purely, and I've seen large parts of NSS atrophy, except for our presence on Capitol Hill. I was in the board meeting when we were proposing to revise the ED search criteria, which led to Brian, and by the way, Brian's very confident in, you know, our representing on Capitol Hill. I wish he'd sit, be here and hear this, but I've seen, I've seen basically everything else except that atrophy. The magazine, you know, keeps shrinking due to budget reasons, and I know the underlying reasons, but the result, but still, it keeps shrinking, it goes from monthly to bimonthday to quarterly. Jeff, you talked about 1% for the future. Well, we had one half of 1% of the NSS budget for visible chapter projects, like Gus doing his mice experiments, and now we're, and that was cut to zero. I'm talking about $5,000 for chapter projects. That's, let's say, half of 1% of the NSS budget and it was cut, so...
Before Jeff's time, I want to say, Jeff and I were very aggressive about actually submitting proposals, which was a problem.
Well, since you're on the board, why don't you answer your own?
When we were doing the ED search criteria, I argued that, you know, such and such criteria should be higher than, you know, representation on Capitol Hill, and, you know, I'm glad we got Brian in the way, but, you know, we are focused more and more on representation in Washington.
Let me say something about the search criteria, and I've got it back with the search committee, but if you have 10 criteria, and this may, the one over here may be our most important, but then our least, if you give somebody 10, nine, eight, seven, Brian by far and away had the best overall total of everybody, so even the best complement of skills that covered all areas. Well, Capitol Hill is a strength, Brian brings great value and all the things we need.
Okay, okay, I think the most...
Except we can't be two places at once.
I think the most important part, the point that I wanted to make, is in order to attract members, we need to, you know, hit the whole country and with visible projects. I see these fundraising letters go out, I read between the lines, it says, "Send money so we can support Brian on Capitol Hill." Well, I'd rather see a fundraising that'll go out with a picture of something that will be built if you give money, be it the Planetary Society snake that's going to go on Mars, you know, a Mars habitat, somebody running around in spacesuits, some instrument we're going to build.
You're absolutely right, Bruce, and if we're moving in that direction, we're putting increasing emphasis on projects. Greg Allison, Executive Vice President, of course, if you don't want to add it back.
I disagree, I think we're not. We finally got a Projects Committee and we cut their budget.
Projects Committee doesn't spend the money. The Projects Committee works out the projects that will then go ahead and be separately budgeted or fundraised, depending on what they need. We don't need a budget for our committee.
I was in the Projects Committee meeting part of the time and they said, "There's zero money for projects this year." That's the perception.
Greg may have more comments on that, plus give probably more accurate view on what chapters can do and have done in the past or have not been allowed to do by headquarters if that was the case. Greg?
I was on the search committee, I will say that we asked a lot of questions about...
I don't want to focus on the search committee.
No, no, hey, you asked about emphasis on chapters needing selection criteria, it was there, it was high, there were a lot of specific questions asked during interviewing processes about chapters, and it was evaluated, and there were tough questions asked at each person interviewed, very tough questions about chapter relations.
But what I wanted to focus on was every aspect of NSS, member services, visibility, atrophy, except our presence on Capitol Hill.
Well, and that is chapter two, you know, we've lost presidents all over, you know, we have two staff people at Capitol Hill now, one A.D., we used to have quite a robust staff. So, you know, our whole society is atrophy. And in terms of projects, you know, gosh, we lost considerable money last year in revenues and, you know, our funds went down considerably, but I'm very much happy, happy to push, and I wish all you would push with me to ensure that NSS can and will fund projects because I think that's going to be crucial for people to see us doing things. We've got to be a society that's seen doing things. That will pay off in long term, many times over, the higher membership retention rates and new members recruits like nothing else, especially like the other people.
NSS is something you can take a picture of.
Great, we're working for that. The SETI HAP project was a project, was a start where we helped support the development of the spacesuit through the SETI Institute. Ronnie? Most people think our society is dying, our society is growing, our membership is growing, our finances now are rebounding. As you know, we had major slump in the economy followed by major hits to our industry that we're associated with, and we've come out of that and we're going up. We've had our first quarter review, which is the only one that Brian has had any direct control of, and we've had a net positive increase instead of a decrease, so I think we're on the right track. We will be...
So, I think we're on the right track, and we will be improving.
You behind there? All right. Take one of the.
Okay. I guess I'm getting. There's always been the suggestion of how constituency decided where to put their money in a budget. Maybe that's the solution, of listing out, "These are N S S projects, including operations on Capitol Hill." And how much do you want to contribute this year and to where?
Joe, you want it to be $1 in the presidential election fund or something? Yeah. I don't, my treasurers go up. I don't think we're quite that good at that level of bookkeeping, but from my lay point of view, if somebody says, "I have to earmark $2 for this," well, okay, I just simply won't earmark the $2 I was going to spend on it, then I'll put it somewhere else. However, one thing you do touch on, which might be worth our considering, is a special letter to our members asking, "Would you like to make a special contribution to these particular projects?" That might be a very useful idea.
And then the fact that N S S is doing something, because it shows the projects themselves.
You're absolutely right, yeah. That would be really good.
We've done that in the past. But what really happens is you get, say, $10,000 for this project, $20,000 for this project, $10,000 for this project. The plan is to spend $50,000 on each of these projects anyway, so it doesn't, it doesn't make that much difference. Understand what I mean?
No.
Okay. Look, basically, each project needs $50,000. And people write in their donations and say, "Well, I want to distribute my money across these three different projects." If it turns out that all the projects get less than $50,000, then you just adjust your discretionary funding so that when the dust clears, that taking into consideration the contributions that the individuals made and your discretionary funds, they still end up with $50,000. So, it doesn't really help that much.
The thing is, you have visible, what N S S is doing, too, you have a member, and so they feel that they're actually contributing. So, both of those are very positive aspects. Even if N S S had already decided, "Okay, we're going to give this project this amount money, and so, we'll take whatever else is donated and put it in." But that's really important, and how N S S really operates like that, that is really important in membership. The key is, the member feels he is contributing, and he has a choice in that contribution.
I think that's an interesting concept. And the fact of the matter is, too, when you give them a choice like that, whereas he might have given a little or nothing, he may now give even more, because he's got things to earmark. So, you add to the total. I think those are some good ideas that we should take into account.
We'll definitely take some contributions or get all the special ones.
Yeah.
Yes. I'd like to take a step back to recruiting at the conferences. One thing I talked to about the Oklahoma people was that we taught them how some of our previous ISVCs were run as community events, bringing in the local community and having information for joining, I'd bring to the brochures as well. So, I do think we should have those brochures out, because if we're inviting the whole community in to participate with us, I mean, one, we'll have a much bigger conference, two, we'll have potential members.
I agree with you. And ideally, our conferences should be attracting the large number of non-members who leave as members. And I think that, this is Brian's first I S T C, and it may very well be in terms of what he brings from headquarters, that wasn't on the checklist, the number that he needed. He brought some. And I think that for Oklahoma City, we will correct that and make sure that it's all pretty adequate.
Yeah, we had a committee meeting to discuss future of the ISVCs. One of the things that came out of it was that we should make a much bigger effort than was currently made, was made at this conference, to recruit to N S S people who come to the conference who are not already N S S members. This has been done in the past, a lot of conferences in the past, and it wasn't.
Other questions? Comments? Contributions? Donations? And then I would just like to say again, one, thank you very much for coming to this session. Thank you very much for coming to this conference. Thank you very much for coming to next year's conference. Thank you very much for being members of N S S. Thank you very much for sharing our vision, so we don't feel like we're alone up there, and understanding is important. And I want you always to know that if you have an idea or you have a bright, don't just sit there mumbling to yourself. Call or email me or some other member of the executive committee, pass it on. There's at least a chance that something will be done if you pass it on. And we are increasingly encouraged to be responsive to it. And that being said, thanks much, and have a very safe.
Oh, here's a guy in the back, I'm sure he joined N S S.
Yeah. And thanks for having a safe trip, everybody. Thank you.